Hi, good evening. This is the Planning Board meeting of January 26, 2021 at 7:00. If we could please stand for the Pledge of Allegiance.
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Thank you. There's a sign-in sheet that's going around. If everybody in the room could please sign that sign-in sheet, and then we'll leave it out. We have people out in the hallway waiting for some of the meetings to start. We'll have them sign in as they come in. I have a public hearing notice. In accordance with the provisions of the Town of Cava bylaw, the Cava Planning Board will hold a public hearing on January 26, 2021, at 7:00 p.m. in the Cava Town Hall Meeting Room Number One on the application of Cava Police Department requesting a special permit pursuant to Sections 3570 and 5300 of the Cava zoning bylaw located at 3 Center Street in Cava, Mass. Assesses map 158, law 103-11-C-E to exceed the signage dimensional requirements in the Village Business District. Any persons interested and wishing to be heard should appear at the time and place designated. A copy of the plan is on file at the Planning Department and may be reviewed during normal business hours. Cava Planning Board, Bruce Mackey, Chair. Cava Reporter, published dates December 18th and December 25th of 2020. So, good evening.
Good evening. My name is Bill Harriman. I'm a member of the Cava Police Station Advisory Building Committee. We're here tonight requesting a special permit for a change in the signed bylaw, Section 3521, which is the permitted signs, and the size of the sign is what we're particularly looking at. Currently, the Village District allows signs for this usage up to eight square feet. Our sign that we were proposing is about 15 square feet. So, we feel this is a reasonable request, seeing as the sign we're putting up is probably a lot more attractive than the ones that are in place right now. I think I gave you pictures of those. And it's certainly less in square footage than that current signs. Current signs are 17 square foot per side. Our one side is going to be 15 square feet, or 14, depending how you slice the banana here. Additionally, just by way of transparency, we probably need to waive Section 3534 materials used. I didn't realize it when I first went through the bylaw, but the bylaw requires signs shall be made of wood or metal. Our sign currently proposes to make that out of PVC for maintenance purposes, sustainability, and longevity. So, if that's a showstopper, we certainly can make this sign out of wood. But we would prefer to have it out of PVC. I think that makes a lot more sense. We're putting PVC everywhere we can to the weather to lower maintenance costs at some future point. The other thing I would, I found, I don't like exceptions. There's one, Section 3539, signs erected or posted for public safety and welfare. And that, to me, certainly could be applicable, because the sign we're putting up is designed to guide people into the police station. And to me, their welfare, their safety is at risk if they're coming down Route 58 and need to get to help. They need to get to a police station because they're being followed, they're with an abusive spouse or significant other, they have a sick child, they need to know where the police station is. So, truly, that, to me, is extremely important. But I don't, I don't like exceptions. We want to go through the same process that Joe John Q. Public does. I don't believe the town should give itself an exception that they wouldn't give to, to me as a resident. But I throw that out there just for a point of emphasis. So, the sign will serve that purpose, and the one thing it does... Is on, sorry. On this map here, there's the police, this is the global map of the whole complex. Everybody has probably seen this 100 times while looking at it. But the road into the police station is going to be the access road right now that goes out of the library. So, one of the things we're going to be telling people is when they come to this intersection, they're going to go right, which technically, since I've been here anyway, has been a one-way street. No, it's not a street. It's a roadway. It's an access road. Not a street. Not a name street. I have good ideas for that later. So, we need to direct them in, and again, if they're under due arrest, average person going in there to get a gun permit, okay, they take the wrong turn, no big deal. The fear is they take the wrong turn and go into this entrance, which is police vehicle only. We don't want them in that yet. We want them in the public entrance. So, so the sign is serving a merit of purpose. I'm showing you a little more. Again, a similar map. But this road they would come into, it'll be striped, so they know which side of the road to be on. It's 24 feet wide, which I think meets the town bylaw. And they will pull in and take a turn into the backing area for the police station or into the backing area for the library. So, I think our architect has worked out one of those details. That sign will sit right in front of the building. It'll be approximately 15 to 18 feet off of the road. It will be lighted, uplighted through the bottom. The fire enough also, a rooster tail from a snowplow should not affect, shouldn't affect, because the snowplow really has to slow down at least, should stop in this intersection. So, so they shouldn't be throwing the rooster tail and hitting that sign. And Dave Seidenorf is in full agreement that that's the location. So, that's how we're trying to do this. My other picture. This is in grayscale, because I'm too cheap to spend the money to do it all in color, but you all have this color picture. But I think this easily shows better where the sign is, how it sits up, what people see when they make that turn. You can see in your pictures, the color picture, up on the front, it does say Cava Police Department. So, yeah, people are going to know it's the police department, but they're not going to know how to get there. That looks like a private place where we put the fences on the side, and people still go to the front pack in front of the apparatus room. But that, to us, seems to be the least of all evils. Again, we're trading 34 square feet of signs for 15, or 40, we'll show that number later. So, any questions on that to this point? We just think that, we think it makes perfect sense. Again, if the town doesn't choose to do it, the board doesn't choose to do it, we say we'll do it. If the board chooses to want that made out of wood, it's not going to be made out of metal. If they want it made out of wood, we consider we do that. We just think we're helping the town by using a sustainable product. Chief, anything? Did I miss?
So, the sign's going to go in the same spot that sign is there?
Right there, yep.
And how much higher?
I believe it's four feet off the ground. You should have a diagram in your booklet. And did everybody have part of the application?
Is it going to be just as it appears in the picture?
Yes.
Yeah.
All right.
Again, it might be an inch lower or an inch higher, depending on, that's the level of the block. We have not started production of that sign, so for some reason, can I say, don't do it, we won't do it. The other issue is, we're scheduled to open this facility, hopefully the first or second week of max. So, we're not far out from start to finish. So, we would like, if possible, an expedited response from this board, if we could. If it's not tonight, at least somewhere in the near future. I don't know how that works.
I don't have any further questions, but do you have anything to add, Jim? And do we have enough people here to vote on this right now?
Right, so we have four members present who can...
So, Rich is allowed to...
Right, so he's the alternate, and he's filling for one of our missing members.
Okay. I thought that was...
Because Ellen's on her way. Richard, I mean, John Gasky will be absent tonight.
Okay. All right. Any other questions by any of the board members before we have a motion right here?
Just one. I'm curious why it wasn't put, put behind the wooden guardrail and made like a couple inches higher.
That was the way the optics planned it. We actually moved the guardrail around it so that it would be, so the building protected the sign up front, up first, and so...
Okay, yep.
And actually, now, the, the guardrails are a little lower than in that picture because they've done some upgrades. It could have been, but the optics presented better on this.
Okay. I just thought it'd be better protected behind the guardrail, but it looks fine.
By the way, the guardrail is now, I tend to, don't disagree with you. I think the sign would look okay there behind it.
Behind it. Protected more, too.
Yeah, the guardrail is really there just to eliminate a car going through the intersection and getting the building.
I understand.
That office right there is mine, so it goes with that.
Now, the chief sits right here, so...
And we have it on tape.
Go to the left side of the sign, ready to get me.
Just for Ellen, it just came in. Thank you. We were just talking about the, the sign in front of the police station.
Right.
And I don't know if you received...
Yep.
Did you get one of these? And it just shows where the new sign is going to be.
Okay.
And it's going to replace...
She has that one all...
This, this, this is the old sign that it will be replacing, right? Well, this is in another location, obviously.
And that hopefully will come down very soon after you, after we move in, anyway.
So, the only thing that's different about this is that this sign is, is plastic instead of wood or metal. So, they're just asking for a waiver for the plastic sign, and, which, which, which I think is fine. I think it goes with the, the whole building, and it goes nicely with everything. And it's, it's, it's just great to see that from the road, so you know which way to go, to get to the police station for services.
And a lot of people have said, you know, why do you need a sign? And I will just tell you, I work at the fire station dispatch from time to time. And somebody will call and say, I want to get a burning permit. Okay, come into central fire station, we'll give you one. What is that? It doesn't happen every day, but it happens a paramount. People don't know where the fire station is. So, if you're in the loop in town government, yeah, you know where it is. But a lot of people just don't. And in the middle of the night, they can't find a police station, which is the only place in town after midnight that there's a live human being. Okay, none at the fire station, EMS may or may not be in, but there's always somebody in the police station that can get you help. So, it's important that people find that joint when they have to.
Ours is actually going to be one of the only manned police stations, all the way from 58 through Yancey, Blunt, and Halifax. None of them, the other stations, are not anymore, to the cost. I have dispatch centers in our police station where it should be. For that reason, we're able to keep the police station open 24/7, and there's somebody that knows. The whole police station is designed around being there and being an asset to somebody who's having a problem. If it's a child, somebody leaving here with despair, and your child's choking, they can pull and get help. Somebody's having a domestic issue, and they need to come here to get help, they can. This, the lobby's designed so we can get them inside and then lock the door in case somebody's following them. It sounds like that would never happen, but we've had more than one domestic in the lobby of our police station, in that small lobby. This station's designed to handle all those things. The sign will help to draw their attention as to where they need to go to get there. I feel the town has spent quite a bit of money on building the station up to car inspection where it needs to be, and I think the sign, yeah, it's a help.
Yes, yeah. The, the building is beautiful.
Absolutely.
It's great. I can't wait till you get in there.
We've cut away a lot, a lot of trees around the front of the building. We've done a lot of trimming there to make the, the front more visible. And of course, the front is its community room, which will be lighted a good part of the time, so it really is going to highlight the building. But that sign will, it's just got to be there, so. Anyway, I'm done.
And we're moving that fence up, too. That won't be there.
Yeah. Are you sure?
Yeah.
All right. Any other questions or comments? This is a public hearing, so anybody out in the public, out in the audience, has anything to say? Seeing no one coming forward, I'll first entertain a motion to close the public hearing.
I'll make a motion to close the public hearing. Cornelia Shea makes a motion to close the public hearing?
I'll second.
So, the second, Kevin?
Kevin, okay, yeah.
I'm just repeating because we have a new recording secretary, so I want to make sure we get everyone's names straight.
Okay, so we have a motion second. Further discussion? Seeing none, we'll prob, we should do a roll call vote, I guess, at this time. Okay, we'll start with Mr. Shea.
Mr. Shea says aye.
Bruce Mackey, aye.
Kevin Robinson, aye.
Ellen Sodillo, aye.
Oh, I think we, did we read the motion?
Well, no.
We're closing the public hearing.
Oh, closing the public hearing, I'm sorry. All right.
And then, Richard, if you, if the chair wants to direct because it's a special permit, then Mr. Deion can also vote on this matter.
Oh, yes.
Yeah, Mr. Deion says aye.
Okay. Okay, so that's to close the public hearing. I'm sorry, I jumped one step ahead of myself. All right, now, I'll entertain a motion.
I'll make a motion to approve the, the proposed freestanding sign that totals 15 square feet in area under Section 3570 and 5300 of the Cava zoning bylaw, as proposed in the application submitted by the police department. The board also finds the following, that with a waiver to allow the plastic.
Okay.
Second it. Cornelia Shea, seconds.
So, we have a motion by Kevin Robinson, a second by Cornelia Shea. Further discussion? Seeing none, we'll do a roll call vote for, to approve.
Cornelia Shea says aye.
Bruce Mackey, aye.
Kevin Robinson, aye.
Ellen Sodillo, aye.
And, see, Richard doesn't have to, if he can, okay.
I have to. Richard Deion says aye.
Okay. All right, that's it.
Thank you.
Oh, thank you.
Thank you.
Mr. Mackey, I would just ask, is there an appeal process time that we should wait on, on building the sign? Or, I didn't know if there was an appeal time, okay?
Well, there is a 20-day appeal period for the special permit. So, we'll try to get it filed with the clerk tomorrow, and then there's a 20-day appeal period.
Okay.
And then, 20 days from now would be the end of the appeal period, from tomorrow.
All right, thank you very much.
The next step, we're going to do the A and R, right?
Yeah, we'll take a look at the, yeah, we'll take a look at the A and R next, yeah.
Sorry about that.
Oh, was that Cape Way jumping front? Is that who?
See, the second is, yeah, yeah, we'll do, we'll do the, this is a receipt of, you need pen, Kevin? There you go. Oh, I got one. There's one here. Yeah, this is a receipt of the plan. I don't know if we're going to, we'll see how complicated this is.
Very cool.
Cape Way.
Very cool.
Cape Way.
Yeah, a little bit back up.
Does Mr. Deion need to say something?
Yes.
All right, next is, we have an approval-not-required plan. It's 105 Rochester Road. It's map 96, Law 10, Rivers Edge Realty Company. This is a receipt of plans and a possible vote tonight. When we, we had been, over the years, taking the A and Rs and just acknowledging them, the first meeting, and then when the second meeting came around, we, we sometimes would take our vote then. But now, we've been doing things a little differently. I noticed that this was, I don't know if Jim had time to take a look at this or not today.
Yes, I did take a look at it and talked over the phone with the Afcons engineer.
All right. So, good evening. If you give us your name and...
Yep. My name is Mike Pimental, and I'm with JC Engineering. And what we're seeking from the Planning Board is the endorsement of the approval-not-required plan for the parcel of land that's located at 105 Rochester Road. Under existing conditions, we have a parcel that's approximately 30 acres in size. It has multiple cranberry bogs on the property. It's got a man-made pond on the north end of the property, and it's bordered by a river, a river, along the south side of the property. All the frontage is along Rochester Road. What we're proposing to do is divide the land into four separate lots. Lot one would be a rare lot, and then lots two, three, and four would be a conventional lot. We provided a memo to the Planning Board that shows that we, that we follow or meet the regulation of a rare lot and go through each one of them, if you'd like. We also took this plan and brought it to the Conservation Commission office so that they can approve all the wetlands. So, we do have an ORAD for the property.
Do you have the ANOI with that?
We, we provided an ENRAD, and then we received approval from the Conservation, and we were issued the order.
All right, so, I guess that, that, that does it. I mean, you're looking for approval by the Conservation.
Abbreviated notice of intent is what I'm looking for, not the A-Rod.
Did you file abbreviated notice of intent for this?
Yes, we did. We, we got approval, and we, we received the order from the Conservation Commission. It was recorded and then sent, the proof of record is sent back to the Conservation Commission. I have a copy of it. If you'd like to see it.
Because it, on this, it doesn't show the 60 or 100-foot buffer from any of the wetlands that I can tell.
I don't, I don't know if that's a concern for the Planning Board. That's more of a concern, I believe, for the conservation, but...
And this is the plan that was submitted to them that shows all the wetland buffer zones for the A and R, we didn't show it.
So, what do you plan on doing with these lots, anyway? Are these lots all going to be building lots?
Correct.
What are you going to do?
Correct. The, we'll be, the, the owner would be selling them, selling lot number one, and I believe would be developing the remaining three lots. We'll have to go through the permitting process with the Board of Health, conduct park tests on the property. We'll also have to go through conservation and produce NOIs, notice of intent, to, to get approval for any work that we're doing within 100 feet of the wetlands, yes.
Right.
But we're simply here just to get the endorsement of the Planning Board, just to get these lots created, so that we can report the, the bylaw plan at the regi deeds and move forward.
So, when you looked at these plans, Jim, what did you think about the access to the lots? Is that according to the bylaws?
I think maybe we have the engineer provide us just a briefing on, on the clerkage, because they did review the real lot regulations. It appears the other lots may have, but when you look at lot two, you know, where's the structure going to go? Is it going to be in the front part where the cranberry bog is, or is there a plan to have a house in the all the way down in the L section? Those are the kind of questions I had, and I think would help clarify for the board. We have four, the top lot is, my reference is here. All right, so the, so the, if it's eastly or northerly, the topmost lot is shown on the plan, that's lot one.
That's the rare lot, correct.
And that's the rare lot.
Access would be from the frontage that's along Rochester Road. Total frontage is approximately 100 feet on that end. And then you have...
But it looks like the plan shows 84 feet?
Right, 84 feet to the, that's to the bound. But if you look just north of there, there's a segment, a property line that you see that's 12.52 feet.
Okay, yep, I see it.
Yep. So, that'll be the access point for the rare lots. The lots two, three, and four, it's all going to be fronted on Rochester Road, so there'll be access directly onto Rochester Road. Now, lots three and four, we created an easement, an access easement, between each of their, their shared boundary line from Rochester Road going into the property approximately 300 feet. You'll see it on the plan as a driveway access easement. There's a driveway access easement A and a driveway access easement B, so that we can construct a shared driveway going down to a certain point. And then, from there, each driveway would branch off into their respective lots to access their home.
So, there's no actual access through the frontage on lot four, because that's a bridge and guardrails and...
I think the bridge is farther down. But no, there, there is an access point. There's an access for, for the, for the properties between lots three and four, along that side boundary line.
Not from the road, though, not, not according to the map you showed. And, and I'm familiar with the new, the Rochester Bridge, and the access to the bogs doesn't start till after the bridge ends, which is what's depicted on your map. So, and because the river runs to the south of this, there's no actual access to buildable lots through the frontage of this.
Well, between the active bog number one and the bordering vegetated wetland, that's going to be our access point for the shared driveway.
I, between bog one?
Bog, bog, bog number one, which is the bog closest to Rochester Road... Bog, bog, bog number one, which is the bog closest to Rochester Road, the southern, yeah, southern, right, along the southern edge of that bog. From that point, heading south to the BVW is a sliver of land that we're gonna be utilizing to put in a, a ten-foot wide driveway.
Right, I, I, but I see the post for the bridge ends and then you're... And I'm familiar with the property and I, I know the access doesn't start till after the end of the bridge, which is, which is recorded on here is the, the bridge pier. Maybe we should do a, a site walk.
Yeah. I think so, too. Get a better understanding of it all. So, you're saying that the, the frontage is clear, but, uh... So, I guess what the board members are saying, that they wanted to, to know if, if there's access of the, of Rochester Road, uh, to the lots. You're saying that there is?
I believe there is. I believe if, if you look at the, if you look at the width, if you look at lot number three, uh, and then if you, if you look at the active bog number one, the southern edge of that bog and to the property line itself is probably twenty-five feet or so. That's the total width. What we're proposing to do is put a shared driveway coming down that point and then branch off to go into the, uh, individual homes on, on lots three and four.
Which would be fine if, if there was access through the frontage to, uh, four, but, but there isn't. And, and that's a, a culvert or a bridge at that point? That, that goes to the, the river, the Weewantik?
Uh, we have the, uh, the owner of the property here.
I don't know, does, uh, I don't know, uh, never run into this before. I have no idea. What, what, uh, would you recommend here, Jim, that we should, uh... I mean, uh, but one thing that bothers me is, um... Well, one thing that I pick out here is that the, the BVW is right next to the driveway. So, does that have to go before, they'll have to go before conservation?
Absolutely.
It hasn't gone be to conservation as yet, okay?
Has not. I mean, we're not saying with the... We can say that these are all buildable lots, but at the end of the day, the building department's gonna determine whether or not this is a buildable lot. We're just seeking approval from the, from the planning board that we do have enough, uh, lot frontage and lot area for each lot.
Mm-hmm.
That's it.
Well, generally, that's what we have done, but we have newer board members that, um, I guess there, there, there is something in the, that, in our regulations that says something about, um, access to, to the lot through the frontage of the property. But nothing can be built until it goes through conservation anyway and, uh, and through the building department. So, uh, no matter what we decide tonight, so... Um, historically, we've just looked at these things to make sure that they've had enough, uh, frontage, uh, enough, uh, upland and, uh, and, uh, just went by the rules of and regulations that we have in place. Are the wetland flags out there right now? Are they still there?
They should be, yes.
Yeah?
It was, it was flagged, uh, let's see... Uh, within the past few months. September twenty twenty, it was flagged. Subsequently to that, we went in front of conservation and, with the N-RAD and got approval. So, I would think those flags are still up.
Is the easement flagged? Is the easement flagged?
Easement? No. The proposed easement? No, it's not flagged.
That's...
Well, yeah, generally, we don't do this for a Form A. It's only for site plan review. I mean, if you were to go out to take a look at it, you would just, uh... You'd have to just see where the flags are and see, see what you're... I mean, it's, it's really difficult to determine, um, because there are no, there are no, uh, concrete bounds set out there. I mean, I, I... In, in order for them to... I mean, as long, to me, as long as these lots meet the requirements of frontage and square footage and upland, that should be fine. And the rest is gonna be determined by conservation, really.
Right, well, frontage shall mean the boundary of a lot coinciding with the street line through which actual access to the potential bin, building sites shall be required. I mean, that's, that's part of the, that's part of the requirements in order... It's one of the main requirements in order for this to, to be considered an A and R and that's, that's where I'm, I'm having issues with this. But maybe a site walk will help us determine if it's more appropriate or... I'd hate to say we asked Jim to go take a look because I'm, I'm familiar with the property and I just, I don't believe there's any access to lot four and it, and at this point, it looks like a rear lot.
So, Mr. Chair?
No, 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 yeah, could you review this again?
So, it sounds like the board has questions about meeting the frontage requirement, which in our definitions means the actual, actual access to the lot. Uh, the board could, you know, just vote not to endorse tonight, go out to a site visit and then we can continue it to our March, uh, no, not March, uh, February ninth meeting and, um, pick it up again at that time.
Okay, and then we'll have to, we'll have to take a look at that bylaw again to see. Because, you know, we, we, I, I know for the last couple, last couple of A and Is we've had, we've run into, you know, problems like this, um, so... And it's unusual, uh, that we go through this.
And in the meantime, I could also get a legal opinion just to clarify, you know, what the intent is there. Because, you know, because it's sort of... What happened in the past with the prior planning board, now we have new members and then there's questions about that. So, it's, it's a legal point that we should clarify so that that way, um, going forward, you know, any applicants coming through now have a clear path to, to know what we're, um, looking at.
Okay.
Sounds reasonable.
And then it'll, it'll give time for... The members to go out and take a look at it, too.
And we gotta get a, a review from the emergency services? We have to refer it to the police and the fire and CONCOM.
Yeah, but usually that, that review would happen before they draw a building permit. So, if they were approved for lots, um, I think that part of the rules and regulations got ahead of themselves 'cause they're not building anything yet. So, to go to that, you know, if you send it to the police department, they're gonna be like, "Would you send this to us for?" Same thing for fire. But if there's a building permit application and, then at that point, that's when those reviews happen.
It, it can be clearly inferred that this is a proposed building site, though. The building lines are on there. It even says building lines and... But I, I suppose that doesn't necessarily, but it, I mean, it's, it's... The, it says, "The planning board will refer any plans so submitted to the police, fire, DPW, and the Conservation Commission for review." So, I, I mean, that's, that's part of our process, isn't it?
It says in the book, but the practice has been that it, you know, once the A and R is approved, the next stage is they're gonna apply for a building permit and that's at the time when, you know, well, conservation's gonna look at it. Uh, border health's gonna look at it for wells and septic system 'cause at that point, they'll have those designs ready to go. Um, and then, you know, usually, you know, send over to fire just to take a look at, but if it's a single family, you know, unless, unless there's something really, um, concerning, you know, fire probably won't look at that. You know, so those, you know, I don't know why that was put in the bylaw. Maybe they didn't have that process then, but now we have a process where, um, you know, the A and R plan, you know, after it gets endorsed, uh, and then what, what kind of seems to happen is that conservation kind of, they took a look at it for the, I can't remember what it's called, the O-RAD or N-RAD?
ANOI.
ANO, but then it comes back for the, for the N-OI part when they have a project is what it told by the conservation agent. So, when they actually have a building plan submitted, then, then they need to get their NOI or ANOI.
Well, the whole reason for that is, is so that the wetlands are flagged on the lot so the planning board can determine what's upland and what's wetland and so that's part of the development of the, of the lot along with the frontage and, and everything else. Um, you have, that's important that that has to be done. The wetlands have to be flagged. But, um, you know, just in the development of the lot, we've never... Yeah, I mean, that's something that we might have to look at in the bylaw review thing. Because, I mean, I mean, you, you have these lots and, um, you're gonna... Where, where the house is gonna go depends upon where the perk tests are gonna, uh, work. Um, I mean, you might perk, uh, somewhere up in front of the lot and if you can't get a good perk test there, then you might have to go to the rear of the lot. So, you really can't determine where the house is gonna go or where the driveways are gonna go until you do further testing and engineering. And then, and then a plan comes up showing the house, the septic, driveway, and that's where those things should be reviewed then. And, and, you know, once everything is designed, in my estimation, anyway. It's kind of difficult because this is just raw land right now.
Right, no, I, I understand. It's just, I just have to go by what, what the bylaws.
Right, that, that's what the bylaw says, but, yeah, no, I understand, yeah, yeah.
Can I motion, do we arrange a walkthrough and, I mean, set this off to our next meeting or...
Yeah, I think, I think we'll just take this and receive the plans and, 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 uh, and then we, we could, uh, you know, approve it at our next meeting and, um, but we'll, or, or not approve, but to, uh...
Endorse the plan.
Endorse it. Um, but, yeah, if, if that gives us time to take a look at it.
Make it clear is that you have questions regarding the frontage, so, um, that's why there's a delay and, uh, 'cause there is a twenty-one day, um, period to endorse the A and R plan. But, 'cause you have an issue with whether or not, you know, you, you need to clarify the frontage part of it. So, therefore, you have justification not to, to endorse the plan tonight.
So, will we have time? Uh, I know we're gonna have a, another meeting. I'm not quite sure the time of that meeting 'cause our meetings have been a little irregular lately.
Right, so what I was suggesting, um, 'cause we have some other matters that need to be covered, is, uh, February ninth, uh, we have a planning board meeting. That's our regular meeting date in general. And come back on the ninth to, uh, you know, you know, continue this matter and then, uh, you know, some of other matters that are, will be pending.
Okay. So, okay, so we'll just receive these tonight. We've looked at them. We've, we've asked you questions. Do we, do we need an engineer down there? Do you want somebody to come down to show us anything or do you wanna...
I just, no, but it'd be nice to know where the particular boundaries of the lots were. That's, that'll help clear up a lot of issues that we...
Yeah, I don't...
I, I figured it's been surveyed. They must be marked.
Well, no, because we, we didn't set concrete bounds and yet these are to be set based upon getting an approval from the planning board. Once the, once the planning board approves the project or endorses the project, then we'll go out to the property and set all these bounds.
Right.
But as of right now, there is no specific bound, sir, right at that corner.
We can do it according to the map as presented.
Would, uh, would someone be available to meet with us in the field?
I, I can make myself available to meet with you.
All right.
Sure.
Could we, uh, set a time that's, that Jim could work with and, uh...
I think members of the board just agree to a date and, oh, have to be there. Date and time.
I'm available anytime, so, uh, I know you're working, um, Ellen.
Lunchtime for me, noon time, somewhere in there would be great for me.
I'm available anytime.
All right, well, we could do that. What, what day would, uh, what day, between now and, uh, the ninth of February?
This week anytime?
Yeah, any day.
Say, maybe next week?
Next week? Wednesday I have a problem with.
That'd be February, Wednesday, okay. Would, uh, would the first week in February work with you?
Yeah.
Say, like, at noon time? Any, any particular day, Jim?
Wednesday, we, we now have a standing meeting, uh, at Town Hall, um, on Wednesday at about noon time. So, we'll be able to do that, but could do, um...
Tuesday, Thursday?
Tuesday or Thursday.
How would that work with you?
Tu, I'm available Tuesday.
Tuesday at noon?
Okay.
Okay.
So, that'd be Tuesday, the second?
Tuesday, the, February second, at noon. All right. All right, so we'll, we'll take these, uh, leave, we'll take these plans with us and, uh, we can go out to the field. We, we hope to meet you there. And if you could just clear up that and we'll take a look at our bylaw. I'm sure everything will work out fine, but, uh, just, just wanted to...
Very good, thank you.
Um, there is a, uh, a sign-in sheet. If everybody here, uh, could sign in, the, the sign-in sheet, it's in the corner of that table. Um, just so we're, we're taking, uh, notes and, uh, if we could have everybody's names and addresses, it would be, uh, it would be good to have.
Do we need to vote, sir?
Yeah, we gotta, yeah, we gotta figure out what we, how we handle these things.
Uh, let's see, who are we up? So, we have, I guess Cape Way up next?
Okay, uh, the next, uh, we have public hearing on, uh, the application of, uh, it's a public hearing continuation on the application of Cape Way Cannabis, Inc. Uh, so Lori Hugh requesting a special permit and site plan review pursuant to sections twenty-two hundred, forty-nine, fifty, five thousand and five thousand point six of the Cabo zoning bylaw located at thirteen oh seven dash thirty-three hundred and seven A Tremont Street. Assesses map ninety-five, lot three dash A dash E in Cabo, Mass. An applicant is proposing a non-medical retail marijuana establishment in the non-medical marijuana overlay, uh, district retail. So, good evening, everyone. Uh, I just, uh, I just wanna start off is that, uh, that some of the planning board did go out for a, uh, a site walk and, uh, we looked at the, at the property. And, uh, I don't know if everybody was able to attend, but there was probably half of us at the time went out.
I believe it was you, John Gasky, and Ellen.
And Ellen, yeah. And, um, so, uh, so we, we have done that. And I just wanted to tell the planning board, there's a few things that I just want to explain because we have, uh, new members here. Just to clarify that, um, you know, this has taken several steps through the town to, to get cannabis here. And, uh, one of the, the first step that, that was, uh, voted on at town meeting was to accept, uh, that we have, uh, marijuana sold in, in Cabo. Um, there, there was a time where towns could accept or deny, uh, having, uh, any kind of, uh, marijuana facility in town. But it was voted, uh, to, in Cabo to have that, uh... having any kind of marijuana facility in town, but it was voted in Cabo to have that Cabo, to have cannabis in Cabo. So that's been done, and there's nothing that we can do to change that. That's, that's...
You're referring to the statewide referendum?
Yes, yeah. And then the, yeah, then the other thing is, is that a year or so ago at town meeting, we zoned certain areas of Cabo where these types of establishments could be. So those things have already been determined, so Cabo's allowed, cannabis is allowed in Cabo, and we do have areas to put it, and that's already been set in stone. Then the other thing that makes this, this particular project a little different from others that we, that we see is that the state, because it's marijuana, has set its own regulations, and so some of the screening that we normally do on a site like this, the state has come up with their own types of screening that they want on these projects so that it's a little more open, and there was a purpose to that, so they wanted to be able to see what was going on at the facility. So I just wanted to inform the, you know, everybody here that that's where we are right now. So I guess you can proceed. I know that we did go, and some of the things that I learned when we went on the, on the site walk was the entrance was in the back of the building, and the people were gonna come out the front as they exit and go to their cars, which were on the, would be in the parking lot on the right side of the building. There was talk also that the pavement was gonna be taken up and we're gonna have new pavement there, and then, of course, we have, in the design, we're gonna have plantings where the state allows, plantings around the property, so that the, it will look probably better than what we have there now. And then I was also told on the site visit that there were gonna be some improvements on the exterior of the building, so, and then I just noticed that we got some architectural drawings here tonight, so maybe we'll go over that, so people know, will know what those improvements will be. But all in all, we did also talk about maybe police being there to guide traffic at the very beginnings if needed, and we also asked the applicant maybe to contact the police department and to work with the chief on that, because we didn't want any traffic jams or accidents. We really don't know how busy this is gonna be. Now, usually something like this is busy for a short period of time, and then it's just like any other package store or any other kind of new store that comes into town, things slow down after that. So I think I've said all I want to say, so I'll just let you go on with your presentation.
Thank you, Mr. Chairman. My name is Tom Pizursky from Merrill Engineers. I'm the senior project manager on the project. We also have the house here for the applicants, and they'll be running the facility. We have Paul Boselay from Main Street Architect. He's the architect, and their counsel, Ed Angley, is here as well. Yeah, we've been, oh, security, I'm sorry.
He didn't show up.
He'll get me outside. I'm sorry.
I'll hide behind him.
He's still stealthy, I forgot. So we went through, we've been through a pretty lengthy process with this thing from the start to finish. We've been through a technical review board, which included the police and the fire chief to date, and we've worked with them from the beginning. We satisfied all their concerns. We will continue to work with them, especially with security and fire, et cetera. There's a lot of stuff that takes place after we get through the planning board here. You're absolutely correct in your summary. The state has 935 CMR, which is one of the most prescriptive regulations in the entire state on how these facilities are managed from start to finish, and that doesn't mean when they're built. It also means after they're complete, the monitoring, the inspection, the auditing. We talked about last time the seat-to-sale program. When a seat is put in the plant, it is, that has a barcode, and that is carried all the way through till it gets to the store. There'll be no onsite disposal of defective products. It'll be, it'll be transported away from this facility by secure means with staggered timeframes, and none of the product is delivered or accepted without two or three people being involved that entire process to witness it. As far as the site concerns, this has been through two reviews, through Fasson O'Neill. Fasson O'Neill has completed their review. We have satisfied every single concern that they've had in completing their detailed two reviews. Some of the things that they pointed out in their previous review, which has been satisfied since the last hearing, is the existing dwelling will no longer serve as a residence. That'll be an office, a security area, break room perhaps as well. Sign application, they will fully comply with the sign application. They're gonna hire a professional sign company to come up with the signage that not only meets the town requirements, but also meets the 935 CMR requirements for signage, which it has to be very subtle. We've talked about this before. It can't say anything, have any displays of marijuana on or products like that. These are very quiet facilities, and they're also probably the most secure. When this is done, and the security guy could talk to this again if you want, is it's gonna probably be the most secure building in town that's monitored and regulated. Site lighting, we were asked to take the site lighting and put it on the layout plan. We've provided full photometrics, but it's hard to see the lights, so this plan clearly shows the lights. The height of the lights will fully comply with your regulations. There'll be nothing higher than 11 feet. I'm not gonna go through all these. We added curbing on the street layouts and curbing on the side to define everything. From a safety standpoint, I think we've got some nice traffic flow in here and very pedestrian safe because it's gonna be clearly marked fully with federally compliant MUTCD signage. People will enter through the back. There's a big serpentine walkway in back, so if this COVID continues, and even down the road, there's plenty of room for customers to stay and wait safely apart. A lot of this is pre-order, so there's not a lot of wait time. Usually the average wait time is 10 minutes from time they get to the site in and out. They come in, they pick out their order, they leave. We've had mock crosswalks in the whole area. We were also asked, and then you're sat there, to provide a queuing plan to show what would happen if all the parking spaces can go, you know, are packed. How would they manage that? There'll be a couple of security personnel out in the parking lot at all times, and they can queue at least 14 cars comfortably in there. We don't think we're gonna need all these spaces. You can clearly see from the traffic assessment, the parking assessment, that we have more than enough spaces to accommodate this, and we will work with the police, clearly if we need it, for traffic control. We were asked to place bicycle racks in accordance with your order, so we have a facility right at the beginning there. It's clearly marked. They'll have at least seven or eight bikes that they can store in there. I don't know how many bikes you'll have there, but we're complying with your regulations on that. No home delivery is planned at the site. It's just not in the plans right now. They will comply with providing the town with the notarized statements and certificates. They, and some town already has some of this stuff that the site's been accepted. We'll be fine with any hours that were related by you folks. We do have a host community agreement. As far as the plan set, I've talked about a lot of the things already on the plan set. We reconfigured, if we need it, the overflow parking area, which is located right in here. It's no longer on the soil absorption system. You can see right here, but it's not working very well. This is the very big parking area here. That's the soil absorption system, so completely off of that. All of our drives comply with the required width, which is 24 feet. All the parking spaces, to include the ADA spaces, are fully compliant with town and federal regulations. And everything else, we've provided all the construction details that were requested by a consultant engineer. There were about 10 or 12 of them we added, so there's no questions on how these things need to be built. They will be built in full compliance, excuse me, with town's construction standards and federal requirements, whichever one is higher, and that is clearly spelled out on how we've specified everything on the construction details. The stormwater system fully complies with the state and all local requirements. I think what the consulting engineer was getting, we used in the original analysis the higher Cornell frequency rainfalls, and on the Northeast Climate Center, they have, you can go right to the coordinates of your site, and that'll tell you the accurate, up-to-date, most up-to-date rainfalls, and that's what we use. However, the town of Cabo also follows that fairly closely in the border health regulations, so wherever we had a higher rainfall frequency, we added that in there, and the system exceeds all the regulatory requirements. That's all I have for the site civil issues.
I don't know. Paul wants to talk a little bit about the architects. I'll shut up and get out of my chair. All right.
Paul Bullier, Main Street Architects. Architectural improvements, we're gonna keep it pretty simple. We're gonna make sure this building meets everything for Egress, and it meets everything for ADA and handicap accessibility. All the windows will be changed out. We'll be going with storefront-type windows, fixed windows. We need to glaze over the windows because we can't have direct sightlines into it, but we obviously want to incorporate some natural light. Right now, the building's completely surrounded, kind of overgrown with vegetation. Due to the regulations and cleaning up, we're gonna pull a lot of that out, and then we'll be cleaning up, you know, siding and doors as we need to, and building new ramps front and back. Want to talk security, yeah? Do you guys need questions or anything on security?
Anybody have any questions about the outside, what it's gonna look like? Any questions about anything else?
It's pretty well regulated on what we can do with the outside, so.
All right. Was there more of the presentation or?
Well, I think we covered a lot of it in our last meeting, which
Yeah, we did. Yep.
All the members were there. We spent a good couple hours on it. We're here to, you know, after the site review, answer any of your questions that you might still have.
Okay. All right, Jim, oh, I'm sorry.
How many parking spaces? Did you say 14?
No. We're required to have 16 spaces. This proposal shows up to 36 spaces, and on top of that, we have room to queue 14 cars, and that queue would not start right in here. It would start up in here and then come around in here, so people can safely still maneuver in and out of here. So you could conceal, easily get 50 cars in here if we had to.
And the employees will park near?
We employ, we have the, we have employee parking, there's an A here from here, and then four here, and then we've got a couple more scattered throughout the site. So we have it, so it doesn't interfere with the customer parking or the traffic. And as you can imagine, this area has to stay wide open here without the interior parking for high safety access.
What about handicap parking?
Fully, right in the middle.
Right in the middle, yeah.
Closest to the accessible point, which is a federal requirement, and they meet here, and then they come right up the handicap ramp, and then they can exit right here. The mock walkway will go right back to their car, the shortest distance they can possibly travel onsite.
Moving all the entrance to the back helped rather than having them all come directly in the front.
Thank you.
All right. Anybody else have any other questions? Is, does anybody, this is, the public hearing is still open. Is there anybody in the audience that has any questions? All right, seeing none, I'll move over to Mr. Walsh, and, yeah, what can you tell us, or what do you have to say?
Well, Fasson O'Neill has provided us with a letter on Sunday for this project, which, if you go through, I've provided copies to each one of you, where they recommend certain conditions, and then there are a number of waivers that they're recommending due to the waiver of the town bylaws because of the state regulations. But what maybe I can do is just, I'll just kind of run through. So the recommended condition to confirm the existing dwelling will no longer be used as a residence or used for non-medical marijuana establishment operations. Next one down, provide the sign permit application, which they'll do at some later point. Request a waiver from the requirement to provide parking lot interior landscaping. The waiver is recommended because the, it would hinder access for emergency vehicles and, and propose row of parking six spaces or less. Should we know the landscape is still proposed within the corners of the parking lot and across the corners of Tremont Street? Next up is a waiver regarding parking lot perimeter landscaping, and under the cannabis control regulations, they prohibit plantings which allow people to conceal themselves, so that, that's why that's recommended. The next one down has to deal with section 3250 regarding providing a 10-foot deep buffer adjacent to the building, and then based on the cannabis control regulations, Fasson O'Neill is recommending that, that waiver's approved. And then, I don't know, the applicant is saying that they're not gonna do home delivery out of this operation, but just recently...
Home delivery is a separate license and everything else. That's not a license that we're going for at this time. I'm not even sure that they're going to approve in dual locations.
Right. So in this, so at this point, do, you know, does the board want to have a condition that would prohibit home delivery, or they would have to come back in for the second license?
By state law, we would have to come back to the town to get approval of that as well. So I think that's, the state's already kind of taken care of that.
Okay. And then another condition is recommended, to require the applicant to provide all licensing materials issued by the Cannabis Control Commission to the town prior to the issuance of building permit. Next up, another condition recommended, to provide a notarized statement regarding the organization's chief executive officer in disclosing all designated owners, including officers, directors, partners, managers, et cetera.
Yeah, that's...
Oh, you have done that? Okay.
Yes.
Then another has to do with the hours of operation. Do you, do you have a proposed hours of operation?
Yep. The town has, it's in your bylaw.
All right. So it's same as the bylaw?
It is. And I don't want to just give you, I don't want to just blurt out the wrong, but it's, I think it's nine to nine Monday through Saturday, and then 12 to 6 on Sunday.
Well, you can get that information. You don't have this written up yet formally or anything for us to sign tonight.
Right. So this is just kind of running through it, and then if there's any other conditions that members want to add to it so that between now and the next meeting we can, you know...
I'm sorry. I have it right. Monday through Saturday, nine to eight, Sunday 12 to 6.
Okay. Say that again?
Monday through Saturday, nine to eight.
Nine to eight?
Yep. And Sunday 12 to 6.
And Sunday 12 to 6, okay. Another waiver regarding providing parking lot perimeter landscaping, the visual screen automobiles from areas on three sides. Again, waivers recommended due to cannabis control Another waiver regarding the 10-foot buffer adjacent to the building, that's recommended to be compliant with cannabis control. Not hours of operation. Condition is recommended to acquire all state permits be issued to the town building official prior to the issuance of a building permit. So I guess that means that copies of the state permits are provided to the town building official. And then, and a copy of the host community agreement, I provided copies of that to you in the packets tonight, so we do have that. So what I'll do for the next meeting is pretty much follow Professor O'Neill's recommendations for the waivers and also the conditions, and if anyone else has something they want to have considered, just send me an email to let me know, and we can add that to it, unless you have something you want to add to it tonight.
So when you get this written up formally, could you email this to us for our review before the next, and then we can all take a look at it and see what we have to add?
Mr. Chairman?
Yes.
Can I ask, could you send one to me?
Sure, sure, you can do that.
Thank you.
So, uh-
All right, so, having said that, well, when would be, oh, wait till Jim writes that down, we'll see when we want to continue this meeting. I know you had some things planned for the ninth with-
Right, I would recommend continuing this hearing to February ninth, because we'll have the A&R plan that was presented tonight, we'll come back for that, we'll come back for the decision, vote and decision on this matter.
Okay.
There's another applicant proposing A&R plans, and so they're looking to come in soon, so I'm going to tell them, you know, February ninth would be the date to do that.
Okay. Okay, so I'll entertain a motion to continue this public hearing.
Mr. Chairman?
Yes.
Excuse me, I don't know if there's any public input first.
Absolutely, right, we called for it.
Yeah, I mean, I asked if there was, if there's a, well, those people are out there for another project.
Is there anybody on the Zoom?
Yeah, is there, do we have anybody?
Nope, we just have Catherine Galloway, I believe she's with the Cider Reporter, and then that's it, no one else is on Zoom.
Yeah.
Ellen still has her Zoom link open, so her curtain or wall is-
Going to be a show, Ellen.
Oh, so you're here and there.
Yeah.
Another question, Mr. Chairman, on behalf of the applicant. We don't seem to have any more issues that we need to address here, so is it appropriate at this point to close the public hearing? I'm just a little curious as to, we're curious as to why we're continuing with one more hearing at this particular point.
Well, I think it's just, we usually go over the conditions.
Okay, thank you, yeah, that makes sense.
So at that meeting, we'll just go over the conditions, and then, and then we'll sign the conditions.
Okay.
And that should be it.
Okay.
I mean, we could, we could close the public meeting tonight, you know, we have done that before. I mean, if it's all right with the board members here, we could close the public hearing and then, but I think we'll do it to the, I think we'll wait.
Okay.
Yeah, I think we'll wait, we'll close the public hearing, and then approve the conditions, and then sign it.
Okay.
Then you can be off.
Awesome.
So that'll, so, so I'll entertain a motion to continue the public hearing for February ninth at seven o'clock.
Cornelius Shea motions to continue the public hearing till February ninth at seven o'clock.
And Ellen second.
All right, further discussion, seeing none, we'll vote.
Cornelius Shea says aye.
Bruce Mackey, aye.
Evan Robinson, aye.
Ellen Swedillo, aye.
Richard Deion, aye.
Okay, all right, well, thank you.
Thank you, Mr. Chairman, and thank you for the explanation.
Okay. All right, so, next. We have the, the Meadow Solar. Okay, so this is the one that the people standing out in the hallway are waiting for. Hey, good evening. All right, we have a sign-in sheet for all you people that just entered the room, if you could please sign into that sign-in sheet, so we can keep track of everybody that's All right, we have a public hearing notice. In accordance with the provisions of the Town of Carver zoning bylaw, the Carver Planning Board will hold a public hearing on January twenty-sixth, twenty twenty-one at seven P.M. in the Carver Town Hall, meeting room one, on the application of Ironwood Renewables LLC, requesting a special permit and site plan review pursuant to sections twenty-two thirty, thirty-one hundred, thirty-five eighty, and fifty-three hundred of the Carver zoning bylaw. It's located at two twenty-three Meadow Street, which is Assessors Map eighty-two, Lot one dash one in Carver, Mass., to allow the construction of a three-point-seven-five-megawatt DC ground-mounted solar photovoltaic system. The level of development is fourteen-point-seven acres with twelve-point-seven acres of clearing. It's properties located in a residential agricultural district. Any persons interested and wishing to be heard should appear at the time and place designated. A copy of the plan is on file at the planning department and may be reviewed during normal business hours. Carver Planning Board, Bruce Mackey, Chair, published dates December eighteenth and December twenty-fifth of twenty twenty. Oh, good evening, everyone.
Thank you, Mr. Chairman, my name's Hamilton Carrier with Ironwood Renewables. With me is Adrian Orbley, Principal of Ironwood Renewables, and Del Knapp with Boil and Associates. We're here to present our project in the public hearing, answer any questions that you have, and hopefully get this approved.
All right, you want to see, you have come before us before.
Yes, sir.
I don't know if you, did you bring the completed project with you, or did you just come and ask some questions at the time?
Yeah, we had a pre-app meeting, just to get a feel on questions and answers that you guys had, so we formally submitted the application coming for a public hearing for the special permit and site review.
All right. So, I see, yeah, I guess we didn't really get into some of this, but I see that you're doing an extensive amount of clearing here to put this in?
Yeah, actually, correct, it's actually eleven-point-two acres of clearing.
All right, and, so you're going to take the trees down, and then these are going to be ground-mounted solar panels?
Yes, sir.
So, what's the height of these?
We have it proposed at sixteen feet, but that's very conservative, it could be less than that.
Sixteen feet?
Yeah, I mean, it's, it could be, it could be a lot less than that.
That's funny, because usually the ground-mounted are usually lower than the dual.
That's correct.
So the duals are much higher, but we do have to know pretty much what the height's going to be. I mean, I don't know if you can determine that, or what?
It'll be both at nine feet, as a fix.
Okay, because we're going to, at some point in time in this discussion, we're going to kind of have to hold you to a certain height.
Right.
Because we've had, we've had problems with heights changing, you know, we've approved fields, and then all of a sudden, they're being built, and some of the solar panels are higher than, and which has caused problems with the neighbors viewing the solar panel project, so.
Yeah, I think we're fine with nine feet, sticking with that, and to the point of trees, I spoke with Jim, and we're happy to contribute to any fund you guys have for replanning trees in the future.
So, do you want us, do you want to give a, I mean, some of the things that the planning board's concerned with generally, and I imagine the other members will have questions, is you have these panels out there, are you going to have any, what kind of electrical equipment out there? Are you going to have transformers? Are you going to have some, some sort of storage out there, battery storage, or?
No, we'll have inverters, inverters and, no battery storage.
And, so how were you accessing this property?
You can see it off of Meadow Street, there's an existing, yeah, he can show you better on that map.
All right, here. These symbols here represent the poles that will interact with the local distribution system, the access road.
Burke says existing driveway.
Yeah, it's, what's a sixteen-foot proposed with a cul-de-sac, and we can work with the fire department to make sure it works for them for a turnaround.
All right, so is there any road, existing road going in there now, or is that something that's going to have to be cut?
There's an existing driveway appropriate just to the north, you can see on the plan, so it would all immediately sound without.
Okay.
I see.
Do you have, yeah.
This one.
Yep, okay. Oh, yeah.
My concern is how much is going to be cut, and where is the cutting being proposed? Up the trees.
Yeah, so the clearcutting would be inside that eleven-point-two acre, inside the fence area, and then we have a vegetation management area where there would be no clearcutting within the fifty feet, and then some trimming within the fifty feet closer to the fence.
The scalded edge on your plan kind of falls just by the side of the panel.
So that's a hundred, that's a hundred feet right there?
Yes, sir, which we're asking for a waiver.
All right, so, and then you have, is it going to be underground utilities from the field to the street along the driveway, and then you're going to have a few poles at the end? Could you explain that?
Correct, so underground utilities, those interconnected with the existing distribution system roadside, so those are, so those are little hooks on the sides of them, those represent overhead poles, so similar to what you can see connected to a home, those standard wooden poles.
So how many, it looks like you're going to have three poles at the end of the driveway?
That's correct.
And then, and then the line's going to go over the road to-
Existing distribution.
To the power lines appear to be on the other side of the road. All right. And, I was looking at this, and you also have drainage basins here, it looks like you have four detention ponds that are going to be built. And is this going to be fenced?
Yes, sir, we have a seven-foot-high proposed fence, which you can, you can see on the, on the aerial, you can show them, right at the edge of the panels.
Has the fire department taken a look at this?
No, we haven't directly met with the fire department, we've been working with Andy Gleins closely, back and forth on a memo, but we plan on meeting with the fire department very soon.
Okay. Yeah, Andy's, I guess, had COVID for a while, and, and so, yeah, I don't know how much-
Yeah, he's back in the office.
But he's back.
He made a memo, and we replied to his memo, and we're working very closely with him, and we're very optimistic with what he's looking for.
Okay. I, I mean, yeah, this really has to be looked at by the fire department, because I, I think the fire department wants pretty good access around the whole field, so, I mean, that'll be something that'll, that'll have to be worked out.
How much frontage you have for that access, that access point?
Hundred fifty on that one, and two hundred and one on the other one.
So, two hundred and one on the other one, where the house is?
That's where the house is, but that's where we're doing the A&R plan, so the access frontage is a hundred fifty.
Hundred fifty, okay.
So what do we have for homes around here, for people that are going to view this project? So this is not a dual use, so dual use, I think, is a hundred percent screening. Ground-mounted is a little different, have to review the bylaws on that to see what has to be screened out there, but we'll also have to set a time for, for a site walk, so we could take a look and see what's out there, too.
Yeah, we'd like to do that as soon as possible, we can stake out the boundaries, so you guys can easily see where the project's going to be.
And so, Mr. Chair, on their plan, you'll notice they have sightlines to all the houses, and then they have kind of a profile on the plan, where they, when they met with them pre-development, they suggested they do something like that, because it's been very successful with another engineering firm, and so that's what they've done here, so that you can kind of see what the profile is as you, you know, go from one of the houses, it looks like it shows the distance, and then kind of the line of sight of what they're looking at.
And we've been working with the, with all, we've talked to the director of butters, and even met with some of the legal butters about the project, we have support letters for the reduced setbacks that we've been working on as well.
Okay.
And we know a hundred foot is, is a request, we've seen a lot less setbacks, so we think it's very conservative for this project.
Okay, a hundred foot from the property line?
That's correct.
Yeah.
We'd have to, yeah, we'd have to take a look at that in the field.
Pardon?
We're at two hundred now.
We're at two hundred.
Yeah.
I'm having trouble seeing where the wetlands and the hundred-foot delineation is. Is the project expected to be all one hundred feet or more from the wetlands?
It's on the western side, Del can show you, but right now, we're sixty-five feet. I do need to meet with Concom, actually, again, originally, we were a hundred, but we reduced it, so, I want to meet with Concom again and go over, and I think she's going to attend the site walk as well.
Okay, so this hasn't been approved by Concom yet?
No, we've met with her, though, and we're going to meet again after the site walk.
Okay, but it has, it has been flagged?
No, we're just waiting on a date, and then we'll go flag the site.
Oh, so, boy.
But your wetlands are only-
The wetlands have been flagged.
Oh, I'm sorry, the, I thought, I thought you meant the perimeter, yeah, the wetlands have been flagged.
Oh, okay.
But you don't have a lot of wetlands on the site, right?
No, it's mostly on the western side by the river.
By the river.
Now, as he mentioned, that sixty-five foot, no touch on the perspective there, but we will be within a hundred feet of the jurisdiction of our town.
Without relief from Concom, it's a hundred feet.
Yep.
All right, I guess we'll have to take all these, so you proposed, so what are, so this, what are the normal setbacks for this area? Is it two hundred feet?
It's two hundred.
Yeah.
So, you've reduced it to one hundred?
Yeah, just to make the project work, if we had two hundred-foot setbacks, we'd, you know, be a very small project, it, we think, like I said, I think that's conservative, considering, considering other projects in the area.
No, we're going to have to take a look at that.
Were all the butters notified?
Yep, a lot of, a lot of them are here tonight.
It doesn't look like there's a ton of them.
There's five direct, there's, I mean, there's technically six, but the sixth one is in Middleborough, and we're with, we're way above two hundred feet from him, so.
I'm sorry, you're way above what?
The six of butter- The sixth abutter, we're respecting this two hundred foot setback, because it's by the river.
Right, the other individual property kind of comes across the town line, but it's on the opposite side of the Leeway Antic.
And what's the address of this?
Of the, of this side, or of the
The proposed project?
Two twenty-three Meadow Street.
Two twenty-three, I didn't see it on there.
Yeah, it's just, just, what is it, north of Cobblestone Lane.
It's setback from Meadow Street, wooded area, kind of like a sand pit.
All right, just saying to the members that we're going to, we'll, we'll have to do a site walk, we'll schedule a site walk, it's certainly going to, I mean, and then we're going to at least have, you know, we'll, we'll have more meetings on this, so, I don't know if anybody has anything more, any of the board members have anything more to say before I'll just open it up to the public here, I see there's some people standing in the back that might want to speak.
It'd be interesting to hear what the public has to say.
Absolutely, do you have a mic for them?
Maybe if you could, if you could
Use the one on that table.
Yeah, if you could just, yeah, if they could use that microphone there. Is there anybody that has any questions or comments, any of the neighbors? Yeah, if you could give us your name and address, please?
John Shirtlift, two Cobblestone Lane.
That's my house right in the, I was concerned about the well in the back corner.
Which house is yours, I'm sorry, you're going to have to
Two Cobblestone Lane.
Okay, that, yeah, I was just looking at that, yep.
And you were concerned about what?
The well, my water well.
Oh.
It looks like it's located at
That's something that's got to be moved.
Two hundred foot mark.
Dale, do you have any insight on that?
No, it's not going to have any impact on groundwater.
You guys are talking about a nine foot fence, or a seven foot fence, or a fifty foot?
Again, setback from the property line by
Fifty feet, right?
Hundred.
Hundred feet.
So it's a fifty foot, no cut, no clear zone, and the fifty feet after that, if any trees upshading, you may trim at the top, and then, so it's a hundred feet total.
Did, did, have you signed a waiver for, so it's, it's two hundred feet for him, currently?
Currently, yeah, without a waiver.
Has anybody signed a waiver yet?
Yeah, like, three people. Out of five.
Anybody else have anything to say? If you, if you could come up and give us your name and speak into the mic, please, give us your name and address.
John Shirtlift, one Cobblestone Lane, and the people to the north, they, that bought Westgate property.
Yes, sir.
They sign off?
Yes, sir. Okay. We met with them yesterday and today, went over the plan with them, answers and concerns, they weren't able to make it to the meeting tonight, but
Anybody else have anything to add?
Frank Gallow, two twenty-six Meadow Street. So what are the, what kind of noise does that emit?
What's the decibel amount, Dale?
Under sixty, so my voice right now is louder than that project will ever be, so, you know, at thirty-six feet, it's no, no louder than like an air conditioner, you poke the window, so as soon as you're about sixty feet from it, you're not going to hear it, and again, operational during daylight hours, so at night, it's very quiet, not producing power.
So what's the impact of the real estate value, the budget?
We could provide you with a study that Cone Resnick did in the U R, showing no impact, so it's not going to increase your property value, it's not going to decrease your property value, we'd happy to provide that both with you butters, as well as the planning board, it's the best study we have, kind of long-term, but happy to provide it to you.
Could you send it electronically, please?
Yes, absolutely.
Would the other neighbors sign off to, for the fifty feet or the hundred feet?
It's, it's only for a hundred, so when I say fifty, that was just, you know, it's a hundred foot total setback, so they signed for that.
So solo panels would be a hundred feet away from the property line?
From the property line, yes, sir.
The security fence.
Yeah, so.
Okay. So can I just, how tall is the fence?
Well, now we have a seven foot.
And the panels are nine?
Nine, sixteen, nineteen, sixteen.
Yeah, we have them on a site plan of sixteen, but like Dale said, realistically, he's nine.
Is that typical?
Yeah.
For the size of, I don't know.
Yes, ma'am.
Could you give us your name and address, please?
Oh, sorry, John Shirtlift, one Cobblestone Lane.
Okay, thank you. Anything else? Okay, seeing no other questions at this time. I'd like to, to go out in the field, I mean, is it real thick out there, I mean, can you walk out there, or?
Yeah, you can walk, I mean
You have to bring machetes and chainsaws?
There's path.
Yeah, there's path through there, they ride ATVs back there and stuff, so.
Okay. So we'll schedule a time, how long would it take for you to mark out the boundaries of this field?
Get it done next week.
And you, and you still have to, to talk to some of the neighbors about the setbacks, right, that gentleman right there?
Yeah, we've attempted to meet with them, luckily they came tonight to get a better idea of the project, and we hope we can talk to them again very soon.
All right. Well, I suppose we could at least go out there and take a look and see what's, what's going on.
I want to clearly see what's going to be cut out.
Mm-hmm. So if you could mark out the, I guess that's the fence line?
Yep.
That's, that's out there, and if you could mark out the, so within the fence line, all the drainage, or the detention basins are within that fence line. So, yeah, it might be nice just to know where those detention basins are, too, if you just even mock them with this, one stake in the middle or something like that, or one, one flag in the middle.
Yeah, Mr. Chairman, as Dale said, we can get that done next week, so as soon as you guys want to plan it, we'll be here.
And then if you could mark out the, where you're going to put the driveway in? And, yeah, then we'd like to view, we'd like to see what's open out there and what has to be cut, too. Anything else that any of the planning board members want to see? All right, so when do you think you'll have that done, and then we'll schedule it for a time after you have it marked out?
We have it done next week, and what we'll do is we'll use wooden stakes for the side way.
Mm-hmm.
Clearly marked, we'll flag the clearing limit, as well as sort of the fence, and then where the panels themselves will be placed.
Okay.
We'll give you kind of a key, based on lighting colors, to make it a bit easier when we're in the field to see which, which line represents which project we want.
All right, so you figure you're going to have that done the first week of February?
Yeah, we can have it done before February ninth.
We, okay.
It only gives us one day, then.
Yeah, yeah, so when, yeah.
I was going to recommend, because we have another project that will be coming before us on February twenty-third, that we would continue this hearing to the twenty-third, and then that gives up, you know, a lot of time to get out there and do the site visit.
Okay, all right.
And once, once you schedule the date, we might flag it closer to when we'd actually have a visit, just in case we had snow or anything like that, so none of our demarcation gets damaged or isn't visible prior to your visit.
So sometimes the second week of February, do you want to go out there, about noon time? Going to have to start serving lunch, I guess.
I think we need ATVs so that we can go around. Can they supply those? No.
I'll talk to the landowner.
What do you think of mine?
Uh, let's see, well, the planning board, regular meeting is on the ninth, so I'd rather not do it there, what's a good day in the second week of February for you, Jim?
Maybe towards the end of the week, Thursday or, Thursday or Friday, or even, Wednesday, it'd be kind of tight for me to get out of the meeting, but if we did one o'clock, I think I'd be able to make it.
Well, we could do Thursday or Friday, would that work all right with you?
Yeah.
Yeah, Thursday, well, let's just pick, say
How would we be able to do Thursday?
Okay, Friday, then.
Friday, Friday's the twelfth.
Friday would be the twelfth. Okay.
Time, noon?
Twelve at noon time? Does that work with you?
Yeah, that works with me, lunchtime is good for me.
Okay, okay, so Friday, the February twelfth at noon time, twelve o'clock, site walk.
Do we want to send them, have the fire department check the accessway?
Right, I'll, I'll hook them up with the fire department, so we can have those discussions.
Have you had a departmental look at this yet?
I don't think we had a technical review committee on this particular one, I think, I think got a, well, mixed up with the holidays and stuff, so I'll go ahead, we'll have a technical review, we'll schedule one of those between, for the next meeting.
I think that'd be important, because I think the fire department, you know, really has to have some input into this, very important, and all right. So I'll entertain a motion to continue the public hearing on the application of Ironwood Renewables to February twenty-third at seven o'clock.
Make that motion.
I will second it, Cornelius Shea seconds.
Okay, so, yeah, Kevin Robinson make the motion, Cornelius Shea second, any further discussion, seeing none, roll call vote.
Cornelius Shea says aye.
Bruce Mackey, aye.
Kevin Robinson, aye.
Hon Sodillo, aye.
Richard Dion, says aye.
All right, so our site walk will be February twelfth, keep in touch with Jim if you have any problems, and, and then we'll have another hearing with the public on the twenty-third, so, you know, the neighbors can come back and see how the project is progressing, all right?
That works.
All right, well, thank you very much.
Thank you, Mr. Chairman, thank you, board.
And make sure everybody signs in, we need your names and addresses, please.
Um, the team, I guess you didn't, well, they did sign in on the sign sheet, so I'm going to go grab that.
All right, so, next. So we have planning board member notes.
Susan, you need to take a picture of that, so if you have it for reference.
Oh, does anybody have anything they want to say this evening?
No, I can't think of anything.
Did you have anything, Carl?
I don't, no.
All right, all right, um, did, I don't see anybody that, we did, we did have a concern about pole placement at one of
Right, I, I wanted to get an opinion from, from our attorney, so one of our solo projects that was approved several years ago, Borrego, one ninety-six Tremont Street, and there was testimony given that there will only be one pole, so the equipment will be on pads, they will go up to a riser pole, cross the roadway to the interconnection pole, and, and then later on, a question was asked, was, is that part of, is that on the plans and is part of the conditions, and the responsible, look, it's in the plan, and, but what was in the plan was not what they stated, so I need to get, get an opinion to see what we can do in terms of, you know, is that something that's enforceable, because usually with, with the term, when the planning board adopts something, one of the conditions is you have to build it according to the plan, and so the plan was approved, but there's a discrepancy between what was testified and what was shown on the plan, so I want to get an opinion on how to address that.
Okay, so we're not going to discuss that tonight, then?
Yeah, you know, other than just informing the board of it.
Okay. All right, so, that, so, going to planning director notes, that was under planning director notes.
Okay.
Does the planning director have any other notes?
Well, so we have town meeting coming up, so we, we had the articles that we presented last year, we had the zoning bylaw study committee take a look at some of those articles, and, you know, they made their comments on them, they will be advertised, we have to have the advertisement in on February fifth, Friday, well, actually before Friday, and then have a hearing date scheduled for Tuesday, March second, so that, you know, the planning board has a chance to go through, you know, the proposed articles, so the, and also, March fifth is also the date that we have to submit the placeholder for the town meeting warrant articles. So the finalizing those, once I get them in a final form, we'll submit them to select board office, also, select, submit them to the newspaper for advertisement, and then I'll get copies out to the members, so that before that meeting, you have a chance to review, take a look at it, and be able to, you know, make your comments on those.
Okay, so we will have a, a chance to, to take a look at these and make comments, okay? All right, and that, I guess that sort of pot C here was discussion, is that, is that what you were talking about, or was that the, the discussion about the poles?
I'm not sure what that discussion's about, yeah, so that, pretty much my comment had to do with one ninety-six Tremont, and then just to give everyone a heads up on the plan for the planning board hearing on the zoning articles.
All right, okay, so the next, we have the minutes of December ninth, 2020, everybody get a chance to take a look at that?
Cornelius Shea motions to approve?
Yeah, do you want to make a motion to approve? Okay, so Mr. Shea made a motion to approve, do I have a second?
I'll second.
So Ellen, second it, further discussion? Am I going too fast, you? Okay, okay, so we have motion, a second, okay, so those in favor, so let's do a roll call.
Mr. Shea says aye.
Bruce Mackey, aye.
Kevin Robinson, aye.
Ellen Sodillo, aye.
Richard Dion, aye.
Thank you. Our next meeting date, so we'll scroll over the dates, everybody can put this in their, in their phones, or like me, write it down on a little calendar. So our next planning board meeting will be February ninth, we're going to have two this month, because we, we have a lot of business going, so, so we're going to do two, been trying to do one just because of the COVID and everything, but I just didn't want things to, to back up, and, you know, and then go in, you know, for a long, long meeting, so I think it's
Has anybody had the vaccine yet, here?
No, no.
If you're talking to people like in Florida and
No.
No, just the first responders right now.
Yeah.
Yeah.
And health workers, you know.
So, no, so we haven't, so So, no, so, we haven't, so... But if you can, and if you don't feel comfortable meeting here, you could, we could see your living room again.
In my bedroom. I said, wait a minute, is this a Zoom meeting? I have a Zoom meeting Thursday night with CPC.
Yeah.
So, I got mixed up. So, I'm trying to put this in, I'm like, now, why didn't Jim put anything in online? And I'm looking and I said, all right, so... So, was I up there like talking to myself or anything?
We didn't see a thing.
Everything you were afraid of happened. Sorry, everything.
I was going to put my pajamas on, but the only thing I did...
No, we didn't, oh, we saw us curtains, I think.
Oh, thank God.
So, I mean, if you, you know, want to do that or if any board member wants to do that, they, I think we could, you know, arrange to have, you know, do it online.
Oh, my cat was very interested. He was sitting...
Oh, well. All right, so, so, okay, so, our next meeting will be the ninth and then we'll also have another one on the twenty-third. And so, just so everybody remembers, February second, Tuesday, and we'll, at noon time, we'll have a site walk. And that one is, let's see, that one is for...
One oh-five Meadow...
That's Rochester Road.
Rochester, one oh-four.
Oh, Rochester Road, okay.
Yep.
And then, and then the next site walk will be, this will be on Meadow Street on February twelfth at noon time. Meadow Street.
And that was two twenty-three Meadow Street?
Oh, two twenty-three.
Well, that's probably where they're going to mark the driveway, right?
It's going to be about two seventeen, I think, is the address where the driveway is. And then, two twenty-three is where the house is.
Is it like just after the electrical? Meadow is, it's in my neighborhood, isn't it? Over, over off the forest?
No, Meadow is from here.
You come into Rochester and I think you take a right and it's on the left-hand side before you cross over at the metal bar across the bridge.
Yeah, I thought it wasn't too far from two sites.
All right. But anyway, so, that's our next, two sight walks, two planning board meetings. So, we'll...
Public meeting?
We'll have plenty to do in February.
Will the meetings be held here or at the school?
Right, our plan is to stay here.
I think it worked out well tonight. I mean, you know, hopefully the legally, it was, people stayed out in the hallway while we heard some of the hearings, so... All right, I'll entertain a motion for adjournment.
I'll make a motion to adjourn.
I'll second that motion.
All right.
Shea seconded it.
So, you have motion and a second for any discussion? Seeing none, roll call.
Cornelius Shea says aye.
Bruce Mackey, aye.
Kevin Robinson, aye.
Ellen Sodillo, aye.
Richard Dion, aye.
All right, so, good night, everyone. Thank you.